21 Meeting of the Hefman Bay Planning Commission. We have a couple items just to point out. We are filming this live on local Channel 27 and at Pacific Coast TV's website. We currently have community members in attendance this evening and everyone in attendance will have the opportunity to speak. And the Planning Commission Chair will open up and allow public comment during each specific item on the agenda. Those wanting to speak will be recognized by raising their hand, virtual hand, and we will allow them to speak one at a time. If you are calling from a phone, which I think there are a couple here tonight, please do star six to raise and unraise your hand, and star nine to mute and unmute yourself. Otherwise, your computer or tablet should, or iPhone should have the feature of the virtual raising hand and muting and unmuting. You'll be given three minutes will be given to each commenter and we will hold up a timer on the screen. This evening, staff did email late this evening, a planning to the Planning Commission, public comments. And they are now posted on the website on the agenda on the very bottom under correspondence. We did have some technical difficulties with our website earlier on the agenda. And so we just got those posted moments ago. Thank you for your patience with our remote meetings and I will now hand it over to Chair Reddick to officially begin the meeting.
Thank you, Bridget. I call this meeting to order this February 23rd, 2021, Meeting of the Hefman Bay Planning Commission. Like to invite everyone to help us start with the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Very well. The first, the first item on tonight's agenda is the Commission's approval of minutes for the February 9th meeting.
I'm going to do, I'm going to do roll call first.
Oh, I'm sorry.
The minutes.
My bad, my bad.
No worries, no worries. Just want to make sure we get that in the, in the record. Commissioner Hernandez is going to be absent this evening. Commissioner Gorn?
You're muted, David.
All right. Here.
Commissioner Benjamin?
Here.
Vice Chair Polgar?
Here.
And Chair Reddick?
Here, thank you.
Yes, no worries.
Do, do any commissioners have comments about the, the minutes for the February 9th meeting? No edits or comments. I entertain a motion to approve the minutes.
I move that we approve the minutes that were revised and distributed to us earlier today.
Yes, yes, good point.
For, for the meeting of February the 9th, 2020.
I'll second.
Thank you, Vice Chair Polgar.
Commissioner Gorn?
Yes.
Commissioner Benjamin?
Yes.
Vice Chair Polgar?
Yes.
And Chair Reddick?
Yes.
Minutes approved.
Excellent. This, this brings us to the point. At the beginning of every Planning Commission meeting, where members of the public are welcome to address the Commission on any, any issues or topics they like, as long as it isn't something on the agenda of the study session to follow. So if you, if you want to make comments on the having to do with the, the study session on the short-term rental ordinance, please hold that for the next item in the agenda, but if you want to comment on anything else, raise your virtual hand and we will welcome you.
I have, I have no one. Chair Reddick?
Okay. Well, in that case, I will not open public comment at this point and we'll go to our next item, which is continuation of the study session on the proposed short-term rental ordinance, which we began at the February 9th meeting and continued to tonight. And we're to have a staff report clarifying questions from the Commission and then public comment. So take it away, city staff.
Thank you, Chair Reddick. This is Jill Ikis. I'm your Community Development Director. We see a lot of folks in the room tonight. We are happy to see that and that the word has gotten out. We've worked really hard to make sure people are aware of this study session and we'll talk about that a little bit more. And this is a continuation from your February 9th meeting. And I'm just going to open this up and we're focused tonight on things that changed. You had a draft ordinance two weeks ago and you helped the study session receive public comment and discuss quite a few items and we really want to drill down into those things were changed as a response of that study session, but also some additional things that have come up because of public comment that we've received and other things that we've been learning about along the way in doing, in doing some of the outreach. We recognize from folks in the room that if they have not been participating over the last few years, we may need to back up and refresh on some, some of the foundational pieces and we're happy to do that. But we're just going to go ahead and plunge ahead on and talk about what you have in your packet tonight, which is a revised draft ordinance. This is in study session, low pressure realm without a public hearing, but you will be taking public comment. And the background, just, so people are on the same page that last time we were here was February 9th and of course, there's been some plotting along over the last three years of getting to this point. And also remembering the context in the coastal zone relative to the Coastal Act, Coastal Commission guidance, as well as this city's now land use plan policy, which is pending certification with the Coastal Commission that provided guidance for the construction of this ordinance. On February 9th, you, you did continue to date certain, so anyone who was present at the February 9th meeting would have seen that. We also put a meeting out in our e-news, which goes to, I think probably well over a thousand folks who are signed up for that. And then the Planning Commission agenda itself went out on Friday and I think there was almost 700 recipients of, of those agendas. All of that's very easy to sign up for. So if anyone was concerned that they didn't know about the meeting, they can contact Joe Butcher and he can show them how to sign up. Um, so one of the things that came up last time was, well, why, why do we need this ordinance? And in particular, why now? And there was some concern that this was promoting short-term rentals possibly during a time when the use of them is actually restricted by the local health code. And we're trying to plan ahead and be ready for that to be peeling away and coming back right now. In fact, we know that Sematow County has achieved what, what needs to be done to be moved into the red tier, which is an improvement over the purple tier that we've been in for quite some time and it opens up quite a few uses. The ordinance itself provides so much more oversight than not having one. And we, we want to remind people that there are short-term rentals operating in the city. They've been operating for quite a few years. They take transient occupancy tax and are supposed to get a business license, but we don't really have any land use regulations. And what that means is, you know, there was some focus two weeks ago about quote unquote, bad actors. And well, we really have a hard time on bringing them into a mode that is compatible with the surrounding neighborhood when the kinds of challenges overflow parking and really heavy occupancies and things like that actually don't break any nuisance laws, but they are things, they're, they're activities that are not consistent with neighborhood character. So you heard a lot of people say, oh, just use your nuisance law. You're not enforcing the noise ordinance or things like that. Well, this is, this is, these are things that we've tried to do and it's, it's really hard. The thresholds aren't, aren't really satisfying to the needs of the residential neighborhoods from the feedback that we've had for those. So I'm also in doing this, we are bringing you an update to the home occupation ordinance in tandem. You did not see this two weeks ago. It's a very light change, which is consistent with work that we've done in the past on the land use plan. The idea is to allow up to one employee and to require parking on site so that can really be accommodated. This came out of the land use plan policy to increase employment opportunities in the city without having a big impact in terms of traffic or encouraging a lot of developments. We're not going to dwell on the home occupation ordinance standards tonight and what you saw in your packet. It's, it's a very straightforward, straight through underlying, but we're happy to answer questions about those. So I'm, I'm going to cover quickly three slides for corrections and clarifications on what you received in your packet. And so two of you caught us in the act of dropping a verb we need to add. Would not be a public nuisance to one of the requirements on page four. And so you can see the, the underlying here, we will be making sure that that gets corrected. We were also caught in the act of putting forth a really, really cute double negative and we apologize for that. And thank you, Commissioner Gorn, for catching that for us. So we'll, we'll get rid of non or not, whichever you prefer. I prefer striking the non. And whoops, excuse me. And several commissioners reached out to us with some questions. And before we go into the rest of the presentation, we thought we'd go ahead and address those now so that you're not waiting in suspense and then you have that context while you're, while you're hearing the rest of the presentation. There was a question about water conservation performance standard that was brought into the ordinance. This was something that was our approach to responding to some of the commission discussion two weeks ago. And the question was the 300 gallons per day. What is that referring to? And that's per unit. And just so folks know where we got that number, it really comes out of our land use plan modeling. And we did an awful lot of work on that, looking at the average water demand for single-family development, which is at about 160 gallons per day per unit. On the, to be conservative, we modeled the land use plan to have 200 gallons per day per unit on average for a single-family home. And then in the event of an accessory dwelling unit, we added half again more or another 100 gallons per day. So the idea here was to think of a single-family home with an accessory dwelling unit as potentially using 300 gallons per day as perhaps guidance that if we have a, have a residential property with a short-term rental, that's using a lot more water than that, then we really need to be careful about that because that wasn't anticipated in the modeling. And so there is monitoring proposed now in your ordinance. I will note, I, I didn't have time to look at a really big sample size, but I, I did look at water demand for about 14 of the larger accessory, or excuse me, short-term rentals that are operating in the city now. And just to see if we could kind of find a high end and they, they averaged under 200 gallons per day, but there were several that were over 200. None of them were over 300 gallons per day. So this is a generous threshold. And so we want to represent that appropriately to now and show you where it was rooted. And there was also a question about responsible party, recognizing that traffic can be heavy and it can be hard to always be 20 minutes away from any particular property. Our understanding of how this is working in other cities is that many operators will have a service, do, do this work for them. And so they will have people on call who are locally available. And so there's one point of contact that it gets distributed to folks who, who can manage the unit and to be readily available. Being readily available to respond to concerns was one of the, the key things that folks really wanted. We saw from the survey that we did just over a year ago. Uh, there is a question about, well, do you really need to specify that there's only one short-term rental per operator? If there's a primary residence requirement, we agree it's redundant. We're just trying to be very, very clear. And so this was, this is a statement that we think is simpler to digest than some of the, the other regulations around the, the range for operators. So we, we had wanted to keep it in. We don't have to, but we're just, that's why it's there. And a couple more, there was a question about regular business hours. I mean, I'm not fully sure of the context of the concern if it was, they were listed as Monday through Friday and basically the hours that City Hall would be open. And the purpose for that range of, of time is, this is for scheduling the inspection of the property for initial registration. This is not about operation of the short-term rental or in the event that something of concern happens and it's on the weekend or, or otherwise certainly would, if staff is available, we would check it out. And if we're not, then the sheriff would be doing that. And so these, this limitation on hours is just getting a commitment from the applicant that they will accept the inspection during those times. And, and then the last one I'm going to cover is this idea of coming into compliance. When you bring an ordinance in, and we talked about this quite a bit at your last session. We need to give people time to adjust and six months to try to register all of our existing operators and anyone who wants to come in new, we believe is adequate amount of time for both the operators as well as staff to review all of these applications and to have those kind of down pat and settled in. The last time you saw a three-year idea for bringing forward the primary residence requirement and you discussed it and you were talking about one year or two years. Most of you were discussing one year and of course, that's up for your discussion tonight, but you're seeing now a revision that shows one year. What this means is an applicant can register in the first six months and does not need to document or come online into the primary residence until a year. The proof of primary residence can be done at any point in time during, during that timeframe and it could even happen in the 11th month. If, if an applicant has appropriate documentation to show, to show that that has been established. So if you have more questions about that, Sarah Clark, attorney is here and she's happy to cover that. So we hope that clarifies that a little bit, that that was the range of questions that we heard in those two corrections. There were some other items that came up in input from the planning commissioners and it will come forward later in this presentation. At this point, I'm going to turn it over to Joe at the next slide, just reminding everyone that this is the, these are the topic areas of the ordinance. These are the bells and whistles that it has and how it is meant to operate in a straightforward streamlined fashion. We're trying to really help our, our operators come on board and we've been reaching out to them. And we've also, Joe, this morning spoke to the local Realtors Group. We met with Ocean Colony contacts and we've had other communications coming in since your meeting two weeks ago. But these, these are still the topic areas that you saw last time. And with that, I'm going to turn it over to Joe, who is going to cover really the, the key items that were updated. And you'll, I hope you noticed in your attachments to the staff report that the ordinance, each section that we put forward, there's one piece that shows strike through underline. So you can see the changes and then the second, it's repeated in clean, in clean format. So it's easier to read. So that's why it's a little bit fatter than you might have expected. All right, Joe, I will click for you when you're ready and it's all yours.
All right. Thank you. Good evening, everybody. As Jill said, we're not going to spend a whole lot of time going through these slides because nothing has really changed based on the meat of everything. So I'm just going to go over what you guys are seeing in your, in your updated ordinance with the strike through and where we are in the slide. So just realistically, right now, when we're talking about primary residency, originally we talked about possible use permits for some people that would want to have a home that they weren't living in and maybe they didn't plan to make a primary residency. So based on what we understood, we heard last meeting, use permits were kind of, no one was wanting that. So we just took that out that it's just primary residency, no exception. So that's the only change out of everything with the zoning and residential area. Next slide, please. Okay, with registration and requirements, everything is still pretty much the same. We have added the water usage like Jill addressed in the beginning of this. So we will have required for, after at least for the first year, whenever we have a new applicant or a reoccurring applicant to provide us with some information of their water usage. So we can see what the differences are. And if there is a noticeably higher water usage, then we could work with those property owners to come up with a plan to be able to reduce that water usage. And another thing that we spoke about last, the ninth was some sort of fees. We needed some sort of registration fee. We've come up with something similar to, I guess, a coastal development permit, permit fee that would just be a one-time fee for first-time persons in the existing short-term rentals, the following year, whenever they want to continue to have a short-term rental, then it would be a lesser amount. Next slide, please. Nothing actually has changed on this one. This is all about maximum numbers of short-term rentals per person and per parcel. So this is all the same. Traffic and parking. One of the concerns we heard was for those persons that are bringing multiple vehicles, some RVs and leaving them for more than 24 hours. So we've made sure that we've added into the language, no more than 24-hour cars parked somewhat in front of the house or in, in the driveway is okay, but at least in the streets. And there's no vehicles for overnight occupancy. So that would take care of the RV issues. Another performance standards that we really think is important is adding, providing a binder or the host providing a binder to the renters that really clarifies our standards in the city, the neighborhood standards. You know, the no fireworks, what day garbage is for pickup that they need to bring the cans in after the garbage has been taken out. Dog-friendly beaches, leash law, smoking ordinance, safety evacuation routes for tsunamis or fires or whatever. So that, that'll be available and, and present at the moment of check-in as well as booking.
Hey, Joe. I did want to know, I think we forgot to highlight.
Events.
Yeah, was, that one was updated. Go ahead and.
Yeah. So again, based on what we heard, we really wanted, you guys wanted to get some extra clarification on our special events and what that would entail. Um, so we did a little bit more defining of what wouldn't be allowed. And that's that short-term rentals essentially are already a commercial use. So the special event would be another commercial use inside of this commercial use that we would, that would be prohibited, such as corporate events, retreats. Um, anything, you know, anything on top of this use that i- is beyond intended for just an overnight stay. But some, I, I'm struggling with the words, I apologize. But basically, just nothing on top of overnight stays, no, no parties, no retreats, no larger events. And we do have that a little bit more defined and you'll see that in the short term, I mean, in the um, in the special event section. Uh, nothing has changed here with the hosting platform regulations. They still have their own regulations they have to abide by and then they'll, we have our revocation process that we'll put in and implement. And we didn't really get a lot of feedback on that, so I think everybody seemed pretty uh, comfortable with that process. Uh, as Jill mentioned also, whenever we originally talked about coming into compliance with the six months, that's for existing short-term rental. Um, I will be available, the reason why we say six months is this is going to be a brand-new process. This is going to be a new application, there's going to be the inspections. So six months seems like a reasonable amount of time for us to be able to get all these existing operators that wish to continue to, to have uh, short-term rentals, to be able to get their paperwork done, get their inspections finished and, and go ahead within, you know, to come in compliance entirely. As far as the primary residence compliance, again, Jill mentioned that at the beginning. Um, originally we put a three-year timetable and one year is what we heard. So that was pretty consistent across the board from all the commissioners. So we added that for a one-year turnover time for them to be, at least to try to switch into uh, primary residency.
And so that was your um, last key slide. Uh, Joe's going to um, really be available when we're done to answer questions on the details of the ordinance. Um, but we've got some additional considerations and I know this table may be a little intense for tonight. But, and so Sarah Clark, her deputy city attorney is going to talk about accessory dwelling units and some state legislation that we're tracking um, that we, we think could need to be um, in, covered in the ordinance. So Sarah, you're on.
Sure. Um, so uh, as staff was considering feedback from the planning commission and from questions we were receiving from the public in the interim period, we started talking more about um, short-term rentals and uh, what happens on properties where we have both a main house and an accessory dwelling unit or a junior accessory dwelling unit. And these types of uses um, present unique uh, considerations for short-term rentals. And uh, we wanted to make sure that we were um, both thinking through all the different permutations that would um, be at play and then also continuing to further ADU's really unique role in um, serving as a, an additional means of housing um, in Half Moon Bay and uh, the provision of additional units and then what, really wanting to keep those protected. So as you may recall, the accessory dwelling unit ordinance that we have in place, um, it uh, prohibits short-term rentals in new ADUs, but allows uh, short-term rentals in ADUs that were in existence um, in twenty eighteen. And there's sort of a, maybe a few more than a dozen, a, a large handful of those type uses. Um, but in general, the AD, new ADUs that are coming online are not available for short-term rental use. So what we went through was this, uh, this table, which I know is, is a lot to look at, but hopefully um, I'll walk you through it and hopefully it helps us make sense. Um, thinking about the diff- different permutations of who might be occupying both the main house and an accessory dwelling unit. And then what impact that has on uh, whether or not the main house or the accessory dwelling unit could be used for short-term rental use. Um, so if we start in that first row where it says that the main house is the primary residence of the owner, um, and then we look at the sort of three different permutations. So whether is the primary, uh, whether the owner is using the ADU as sort of a continuation of their primary residence. It could be a situation where they have grandparents or kids, someone in their family is, is using that unit. Um, then in that circumstance, we would have, it's okay to uh, use the main house as a short-term rental, but the ADU um, cannot be used for a short-term rental unless it's grandfathered. Um, this is also the case if the ADU is uh, in long-term use for a renter or if it's just sort of sitting there vacant as a, you know, occasional use for guests, that sort of thing. Um, the second uh, permutation that we thought about is um, whether, when the main house is being rented through, as a long-term renter and then, you know, the ADU is falling into those other categories of, you know, primary use by the owner. This is a situation where, you know, it could happen, um, you had, you owned a large house, you've downsized, you move into the ADU and you decide to rent out your main house. Um, or a situation where you have two different long-term tenants in that ADU or a situation where long-term rental use of the ADU or of the main house and no one in that uh, that uh, ADU uh, unit. Um, here, it's because we have a, a long-term tenant that is using the main house as their primary residence, it is okay for the main house to be used for short-term rental use. But again, the ADU cannot be used uh, for short-term rental use unless it's one of those grandfathered units. Um, and then finally, we're in the circumstance where no one is using the main house as a primary residence. Um, including the situation where the main house is not being used as a primary residence, but the ADU is being used as the primary residence of the owner. And what we've proposed and uh, or what we're proposing to do with some clarifying language um, would be that in that circumstance where the main house is not being used as anyone's primary residence, that short-term rental uses would not be permitted in that circumstance um, in, on any of the properties. So either in the main house or in the accessory dwelling unit. Um, and then that's because in that circumstance, the main unit would be not, would not be meeting the uh, the proposed um, primary residence requirement. So this is for sure, up, open for discussion. This is how um, staff had uh, tried to work through some of the knotty issues and where we landed um, with a proposal based again on the desire for accessory dwelling units to be, continue to be used um, as a long-term housing, a long-term housing solution um, for folks in Half Moon Bay. Um, and we can talk more though, if, if you have other ideas or other questions or considerations. Um, Jill, did you have a slide on, on SB nine?
I do, um, I just wanted to add the note that um, as Sarah said, this is, this is a tipping point. We're aware that we have some properties that are functioning in, in the condition where a um, the owner is living in the ADU and renting, doing whole-house, short-term rental um, to a really significant volume of, of business. And so this needs to be really um, thought through carefully. It's challenging um, in, in quite a few ways. And we, we will make sure that people are notified if they're, um, depending on where the, the commission wants to go with this, if they're affected by it or not. Um, but we're putting our hat on first for supporting housing because that is city council's priority and that is the purpose of developing all these ADUs for state laws. So um, I know, I'll talk a little more later about short-term rentals as commercial businesses. That's an important point that seems to be getting lost from time to time.
Um, so the, the next slide is about um, current state legislative efforts. I'm sure you'll hear more about this as we move through the year, but once again, the state legislature is really focused on the production of housing. Um, and we have some proposals moving through the legislature right now that would essentially bring back this idea of um, four-plexes or duplexes on, what are currently single-family lots. Um, and one of the main bills is SB nine by Atkins, but there are a couple of others that also have similar ideas. I, it would essentially um, require local jurisdictions to process lot splits, so the creation of two new um, lots out of one current lot. Um, as a ministerial act, likewise, um, allowing up to two units to be built on each um, particular lot. And so the city is tracking this, um, and we're doing some additional research and considerations about um, how to address this, both in the short-term rental context, but certainly in other planning contexts as well. And I'm sure that um, that Jill will be keeping you informed of that as we move forward. Um, but with, relevant to tonight's um, consideration, one idea we had to um, address this in the short-term rental context, if still the um, the bill does move forward and these uh, lot splits are allowed, um, certainly it could be the case that the city would see an increase in really smaller substandard lots. And so to address this in a short-term rental context, we came up with the idea of establishing a minimum lot size um, so that uh, short-term rentals would not be permitted if you go below, and we're, and we're thinking really small lots, something um, you know, that would fall into the substandard category. Um, and that, the reason for that is that many of the considerations that the city has in wanting to regulate short-term rentals are nuisance concerns. Their noise, their trash, their parking, their things that are related to living in really dense environments. Um, and so we would try and target this by um, you know, continuing to allow short-term rentals in most circumstances, but we, if we get into circumstances where we have really small lots that are adjacent to each other and houses are on top of each other, we could, we could look at modifying it this way. Um, and uh, this may also have some impact on certain properties now that also fall below uh, you know, minimum lot sizes. And we could, we could do more research on this, on what the numbers would be and where they'd be located. Um, if that's of interest, but um, just an idea for sort of trying to head a little bit of this concern off at the path, um, regardless of whether this bill uh, continues in the way it's going right now. And with that, I, turning it back over to you, Jill.
Yeah, thank you, Sarah. Um, I just had a couple more uh, quote-unquote additional considerations. These, this came up um, in some of the communications that we received and that was conveyed to the commission. Um, we were asked about parking exceptions um, from a couple folks. And, you know, it's important to recognize that the city's um, zoning code, uh, the chapter on parking has a well-developed um, findings and considerations for granting parking exceptions. Parking exceptions um, can only be granted really by, by the planning commission or city council on appeal. So it's, it's considered a sensitive matter. And uh, there are some reasons why a parking exception um, might be appropriate for short-term rental where uh, on par with other types of it um, land uses that the commission is considered for parking exceptions, such as when a stored resource is involved. And um, there's a, there's a couple cases that we, we've been alerted to. And it, it makes sense to at least have, have the item on the table from staff's perspective, since this is something that's already um, been considered by the commission and it's done very carefully with uh, looking at the particular case, uh, the conditions of street frontage, um, parking needs relative to postal access, et cetera. So um, we don't have a specific tie right now in the draft ordinance to um, pick you over to uh, the parking exception code. And we, we just wanted to bring that up and suggest that we, we would be comfortable adding that in. Um, we don't think you'd see a lot of them. The parking uh, code that's been provided in your draft ordinance, uh, we talked about it a couple of weeks ago. And it's scaled to the bedroom count for, for any particular unit. And frankly, that's how most of those um, units were, were developed. Um, the amount of parking that is provided is, there's usually more with the bigger house. So it, it looks like it will work pretty well in most typical cases. Uh, the other one is about our mixed-use districts. We, we have um, parts of these districts where there's um, all kinds of residential development and or mixed-use development. And the question of, do we really need to have a primary residence in a mixed-use district where the district allows uh, lodging broadly? Um, and breakfast, um, hotels, ends. Is it as important in those areas where we, we're emphasizing visitor-serving, commercial uses, a mix of uses for, um, for example, the CD is the Commercial Downtown District. I'm sorry, I, I did that quickly. Commercial downtown is really centered on Main Street um, between the bridge and um, farther south and a, a block um, to the east and to the west and a little more expansive in some areas. And that district is meant to, to be vibrant and um, have uses that kind of change over time uh, in an organic fashion, which frankly, they've been doing. It's been interesting to watch Main Street over the last year. Um, as well as the Commercial General District where, which is um, mostly focused around uh, Highway one and uh, ninety-two, there's not a lot of housing, uh, single-family or, or small housing developments in that zone. So it, it might not really be terribly applicable. We have two other mixed-use um, zoning districts and where we wouldn't suggest um, taking away the primary residence requirement in either a, um, either of them. One of them is the uh, Commercial Residential District. It is a transition district between downtown and residential neighborhoods that surround downtown. And it emphasizes residential and the character of it is a lot more like your R-one, R-two, R-three um, zoned areas. And the other is Commercial Visitor Serving and the Commercial Visitor Serving Zone barely allows any housing at all. So it's not really something that, you, you could go either way with it. It, it just really wouldn't make much of a difference. But we would suggest um, thinking about uh, Commercial Downtown and Commercial General and um, the context for those areas as, as seen like different than, than the R-one, R-two, R-three neighborhoods that we've been focused on. And, but kind of to wrap up here, uh, for staff is um, we already talked about communications received. Um, I think Bridget, I put, it will be posted to the agenda page, I think it has been now. And thank you, Sarah. I was interested in seeing um, uh, some of the emails that have come in. It's not a lot, but, but there's several and um, you know, people like to, to see what others are thinking. Uh, they're new on the website. Uh, one of them did ask questions about mixed-use districts and we, we were already looking at it. And so that just um, hooked me a little bit more to think about that. Um, and we also um, were, uh, somebody was concerned that there was some kind of a, a limit or a cap on a number of nights per year for short-term rental use. And we believe that we've clarified that, that there is a ninety-night per year cap proposed for that very special circumstance of duplexes and triplexes. Um, but others than that, there's, there's no cap at all. So um, given primary residence, um, hosted, hosted short-term rentals could operate every night and um, unhosted um, could be whole-house rentals um, similar to Seminole County's regulations, which is a hundred and eighty days. Um, it really would, would open it to the half the year for a resident to have, have a half the year um, primary residency. We see some folks in the audience are raising their hands, the public hearing will come up in a little bit. Um, and we're, we're wrapping up the staff piece and um, let's see here. We're on next steps. Um, this is the same slide as last time, we, we're still sort of on this um, potential schedule, but we need to see how things go tonight. And um, we're also very attuned to the public comment and what kind of outreach may, may be appropriate at this point in the process. Um, also, I, I promised that I would reach out to the coastal commission staff um, between last meeting and this one. I did, uh, the, the key question that we asked them, um, they're tracking it, they want to have updates, but we did want to know um, about coastal development permits because that came up in the planning commission discussion. Um, coastal development permits are not a requirement of the coastal commission for short-term. Um coastal development permits are not a requirement of the Coastal Commission for short-term rentals in other coastal cities that have zoning code regulations. That this registration approach is, is really what they're looking for. The CDPs kick in if there's development um required to support the use. And of course, the Planning Commission would um see, see the item if, for example, you're, you're going to think about a parking exception, you might see that from time to time, but it would be quite limited. Um and then the revocation procedure is meant to go to a, a hearing officer. And that is something that we're proposing to change also in the Home Occupation Ordinance. Right now, the Home Occupation Ordinance functions on a complaint basis and complaints are reviewed by the Planning Commission. We would strongly encourage um changing that to investigations by staff and then presentations to a hearing officer as, as an appropriate course for, for reviewing those kinds of items. And Sarah can talk a little bit more about that. Um so for folks who are present, um this is uh part of the meeting tonight where stuff is, we're done and we um bring it back to our chair, Chair Reddick's going to take the meeting over. Um and he's going to entertain clarifying questions of the Planning Commission. And then there'll be a public comment session as well as a commission discussion. And we're looking forward to your direction. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Jill, and thanks to our city staff team. And I, I think you all have made a, a great progress in making a, what began as a very complicated morass of stuff, making it very clear. Do commissioners have uh clarifying questions of city staff? Commissioner Benjamin?
Um, thank you very much, uh Chair Reddick. Um one of the items that I remember from our hearing at the last meeting that didn't make it into the short summary, but I want to be sure didn't fall off the, the list was Vice Chair Pogar's comment about the importance of providing wayfinding, because left to their own devices, people can get into hazardous or sensitive coastal resources. Um and uh I just wanted to be sure that hadn't fallen off the plate, um because I, I didn't hear it mentioned. No other, no other um profound comments at this time, I'd rather hear it from the public before sharing my, my perspective. They often are wiser than me. Thank you.
Through the chair, if you want staff to answer these questions as we go, we can um.
That's probably best.
Okay, the wayfinding is acknowledged in the staff report as part of the binder materials and it's a really important um component that Commissioner Pogar, as well as Commissioner Benjamin, um brought us to from the last meeting and thinking about sensitive receptors, not just neighbors and neighborhoods, but also our very fragile coastal environment. And so the idea is to have um what we think will be actually very, very nice materials for operators to share with their uh clients and about Halfman Bay and the coastal zone and uh how important it is to stay on trails and to protect fragile bluffs, what extreme fire hazards are all about, what's a tsunami warning all about, and how to be a good neighbor while you're enjoying um your stay as a neighbor um from that, from that really special perspective of a short-term rental can provide. That's, that's a lot different than, than a hotel. So we do have it in the staff report, we didn't, um you're right, we did not present that. Um and I'm sorry, Chair Reddick, I forgot to mention something um that we think is important for folks to consider.
Sure.
There's a comment, um we've, we've heard comments about, oh, we really need to let people use their houses any way they want. And that is right, um a house is a house and it's a home and it's a land use. And it's also got a zoning district where it sits. And um so what we're talking about here is um short-term rentals are commercial uses. They're not residential land uses, they're, they're distinct from that, just as home occupations are. So these are added on to the bases of using a house for housing, whether it is owner-occupied or rented out or has an ADU, or it's multifamily or single-family. All those ranges of how we use homes and they are occupied by households of all kinds of combinations and sizes, et cetera. This ordinance doesn't touch that. It's not about that. This is about trying to be careful in introducing and allowing and maintaining commercial uses um in predominantly residential areas, which is why we think that the mixed-use thing should be a little bit differently. So wanted to make sure that we were very clear about that context. And if there are more questions about that, I know Sarah can answer some of them and I can as well. So thank you for indulging me to um present that.
Of course, Jill, thank you for those answers.
Through the chair, I, I, in, in her comments, I appreciated that and I, I clearly heard the bit about hazards. I just thought the wayf- and I saw it in the text, I just thought the public would want to, would want to capture that. Um there was one other topic that came up at our meeting the last time, which was the, the framework that uh in some ways, this housing, uh the short-term rental housing was set up under the rubric of providing affordable access. And we had asked about um whether there was some relationship between, or whether there should be some relationship between the affordability of the short-term rental housing and the kinds of rental housing that we might want to permit under this ordinance, or that we're constrained from limiting, or that we're required to permit. I, I've tried to paint that several ways. And I may have forgotten what the feedback was on that. Do you, can you enlighten me?
Uh are you addressing Jill, Commissioner Benjamin? Now you're muted, Jimmy.
I'm sorry, that, uh yeah, I mean, that could, Jill's probably the great, maybe it came up and I've just forgotten or wouldn't be the first time. Uh or perhaps there's new insight or no insight. It may also be a question that uh our attorney can, can speak to.
I'd like Sarah to um go first.
Yeah, sure, I'd be happy to. Um so the question of affordability and the range of affordability provided by short-term rental housing comes up in the context of what the Coastal Commission will allow cities to do and not allow cities to do. So if we were looking at um a more restrictive short-term rental ordinance, one that, for instance, included significant night limits or caps on the number of short-term rentals. What the Coastal Commission has said is in that context, the city then is required to justify why the, why the regulations are not a burden on affordable units being available for folks wanting coastal access. Um the way that we have drafted this ordinance, uh and based on the, your feedback and the public feedback so far, I don't believe we're approaching the circumstance in which the commission will require us to provide that through in-depth granular, granular justification comparing the costs of um afford, and the affordability of short-term rental uses versus the cost and availability of hotels or other types of coastal access. Um that said, uh you know, we certainly could take feedback or um requests for information about um the relative affordability of various units and, and whether, what information you may need in order to make a, a good decision about which direction to go. Um the only other thing that I'd add on that is um certainly, we get more affordable units when they are partial, they're not whole-house, they're um what's typically known as a hosted stay, where you're renting out a room or a couple of rooms. Those tend to be the more affordable um types of units um on a per-night cost. But one other thing that the Coastal Commission has said in, in recent months is um larger homes can be expensive per night, but if they allow more people to share in that cost, then they can actually sometimes be more affordable than getting multiple hotel rooms, things for families, that sort of thing. So there's a lot of factors at play as to what actually constitutes affordability in this context.
Okay, thank you very much. I appreciate that. Thank you for indulging my follow-up.
Uh Vice Chair Pogar.
Yes, thank you very much. Um I, um I had just two uh or maybe three clarifying questions. Um one had to do with um understanding how the city under, will be able to track continued primary residency. Um because I, I see that, that in the application process, um there's the, you know, that, that's where that primary residency is established. Um and it does, I mean, there's this registration term in the, uh which is number four in the ordinance and the operation requirements, um which should cover it, but it's a little bit confusing to me. And I wanted to get clarification on how, how the city can track if, you know, the, the continued primary residency um of the, the short-term rental.
Uh Chair, do you want me to, and Jill, do you want me to answer that one?
I do. Um I, I think the first, just the staff perspective, just quickly, is that renewals will have to update that every year. So um this is an annual, it's not a one, one-and-done. The inspection is the one-time thing in most cases, but this will be checked every year. But Sarah, um they have some additional thoughts on that.
Sure. Um yeah, so it's checked every year, you'll have to provide updated documentation, whether that's you're using a property tax homers exception or something else. Um so that's one way of checking it. The other way that um is common in these scenarios is we do impose a um, a document retention uh requirement for hosts, where they're required to keep track of how many nights they're renting. Um you know, what the sort of ongoing short-term rental use looks like at the property. And if the city had reason to be concerned that someone was um trying to skirt the primary residency requirements, we could certainly inquire based on those documentations to really look at, okay, did it turn out that they were actually renting, doing whole-house rentals for two-hundred-and-eighty days of the year? Um you know, even though they're, they've got their utility bills there or whatever other documentation they provided. So that's sort of a backstop, um if, if there's concerns about someone skirting the, the primary residency requirement.
Okay, um and then my other question had to do with, um or another one is, uh has to do with the special events. Is the way I read the revised version, and maybe it was like that before and I, but this is um the under section six, the performance standards, I, new I. Um it says, so it, it's, uh so I, I maybe missed this before, but now I'm reading this and I'm understanding that it, basically, this is saying that a special event by definition is a commercial use? Is that, am I correct?
No, not necessarily. Um so there's an or uh in there. So short-term rentals, you can't use them for any commercial purpose. So that's one type that you can't use them for, or any event likely to result in these violations.
Okay, sorry, I missed that.
No problem. Um it is confusing particularly in the red lines. But we're intending to capture um such things like weddings, which may not be commercial in nature, but certainly could have adverse effects.
Okay, that, that was basically where I was getting confused. Okay. And then the last thing, question I had was, you mentioned that there might be, might be worthwhile for us to consider um when a parking exception might be applicable. And I hear that that's not that, you don't think that that's necessarily very common or likely. But you, I, I just didn't, I, I was trying, maybe you could provide an example of where staff thinks that um or sees where this might be appropriate. Um because I saw the historic resources and I must admit, I didn't make, connect the dots to how, what, what you meant by that. So if you maybe had a quick example of where maybe that's an appropriate thing to consider.
So um I'll go with that one. Um I think one of the um the folks who brought this to my attention is, is here tonight and maybe will present, present this example, but um let's, let's generalize it. Uh thinking of a property with historic structures on it, that doesn't have a garage or driveway. Um and it would be really difficult to get onsite parking um without really reconfiguring um the building of the property, which could affect a historic structure. Um if, if this was a case and there was um not a, a critical parking shortage in a particular area, you know, all those other kinds of things that you would, you have looked at in the past as a commission, that might be one where you, you would consider a modest parking exception. Maybe not for, or vehicles, but maybe one or two, you know, something, something scaled to, to the need of, of the use relative to, to the ordinance. So just, that's just one. Does that help illustrate?
Yes, uh thank you.
Vice Chair Pogar, are you satisfied? Commissioner Gorn, any clarifying questions?
Uh no, I have no clarifying questions. I, I did want to say, uh thank you for that ADU clarification. That was one of the things I wondered about and that was very clear and helpful. Thanks.
I have two, I think, very quick questions, but um Sarah, the uh the concept of grandfathering STR use of an ADU, what is the specific requirement? Is it on a particular date?
Yes, and I will, um I'll have to pull up that section of the code, but uh there are requirements for the date that it was used, that it was being used on and the amount of previous time that it had been used for, there may be other requirements. I'll check it and I'll, I'll let you know uh perhaps after public comment.
Thank you for that. And um one question for maybe Joe or Jill. The, the one-year time period that an operator would have to establish primary residence, does, does that year begin when the ordinance is passed or when they first register with the city? Or have we not got?
I accidentally muted you while I was unmuting myself, so. I'm having a little bit of trouble tonight, I'm not feeling well and I apologize.
Oh, I'm sorry to hear that.
It's okay. Uh that, um we envision that as starting from a Coastal Commission certification. We wouldn't start from a city adoption because there can be, it could certify quickly or it could be protracted. And so we really wouldn't have an effective ordinance until the commission certifies it.
That makes sense. That makes sense. Commissioner Benjamin, you, you have another question?
Uh thank you, through the chair, just to, just to tag the question that you had asked uh about the uh time period for coming into conformance and grandfathering. Um another angle that I could imagine could come up in conjunction with an existing use that ran afoul of uh changes in the ordinance is someone could argue that they were legal non-conforming. That is, they were conforming at the time they initiated their use. But that just because the use changed, it wouldn't automatically deprive them of the ability to continue to act in a previously legal fashion. And I wonder if uh ours, you know, perhaps Sarah or Jill have a thought about whether we've tied that up the way we want to. Thank you.
Go ahead, Jill. You're muted, Jill.
I see. Bear with me. Um there's a section in uh the draft ordinance that addresses existing uh short-term rentals and we will go back and, and read it carefully, but I believe it's, it's quite straightforward and it, it doesn't set up uh legal non-conformities.
Very good.
Chair, I have the answer for you on ADUs if you'd like that now.
Thank you for that.
So the requirements for it to be grandfathered were that it had to have been rented as a short-term rental for at least 30 nights prior to December 12th, 2018, which is when the prior ordinance went into effect. It has to be owner occupied, and it had to have been in full compliance with the city requirements at that time, including payment of TOT and business licenses. And if that use discontinues for a period of six months, then it's deemed discontinued and the exception no longer applies.
Very good. Thank you for the quick research. Well, are there further clarifying questions? I don't see any commissioners' hands up. So unless staff has further comment at this point, we'll go to public comment. All right. I open the public comment and turn it over to Bridget for traffic control.
Okay, first up we have is Alan Seem.
Welcome, Mr. Seem.
There you go. Hello. Hi, can you see me?
We do, yes.
All right, great. Thank you. First, I'd like to thank the commissioners and the other staff members for their service to the city and for holding this open forum. It's greatly appreciated. So I'm a resident of Ocean Colony. I've had short-term renters every year for the last eight years without any incidents at my property or any complaints from my neighbors. The renters have had a fantastic experience and, you know, I feel confident to say that my neighbors have not had any issues either. I have another home that's minutes away from Half Moon Bay, and I personally spend a lot of time in Half Moon Bay. And I highly value the living experience there and greatly respect the rights of my neighbors to enjoy their properties the same way as I'm able to enjoy mine. I pride myself on running the rental in a responsible way. And I also have a property manager to make sure things go smoothly when I don't. So I'm heavily in favor of the restrictions that have been proposed that relate to nuisance issues like parties, parking, occupancy limits, trash, corporate events. You know, I totally understand that these protect the rights of the neighbors and preserve the quality of the neighborhood. However, there are some rules that I'm not in favor of because I think they impinge my rights as a property owner. I think you have to respect the rights of the neighbors, but you also have to respect the rights of the property owners while there has to be a balance. You know, at the beginning of this meeting, I noticed that you all did the pledge of allegiance. And I would just point out that, you know, a preamble to the Declaration of Independence says that there's an inalienable right to life, liberty, and the pursuit of happiness. And I think that includes the right and the liberty to use your property as you see fit, as long as it doesn't impinge on the rights of your neighbors. So there's two specific provisions I'd like to talk to in that regard. The first is the limit on the number of nights. And, you know, I don't think that should be relevant as long as an operator runs their property properly. So I noticed in the last draft that had been deleted. And so, you know, I applaud the commission for making that change. But I also saw that there was a requirement that the property must be a primary residence. I think that is completely irrelevant to my ability to run the property in a way that complies with all the other rules that have been proposed. You know, whether I live there full-time or not, I think is completely irrelevant. You know, as I said, I live minutes away, as does my property manager. So whether, you know, it's my permanent residence or a second home should have no bearing at all on, you know, whether I should be able to operate it as a short-term rental. So I would suggest you do away with those restrictions, or at least, you know, consider grandfathering in people who have purchased their properties with the expectation that they would be available for short-term rentals, as I did when I bought the property eight years ago. And then I just, there's a comment earlier about how the ordinance is restricting the operation of business from a residence. And I would just point out that there, you know, that really all, what all short-term rentals are doing is allowing people to live in Half Moon Bay like we all do. So, you know, I'm not proposing to open up a coal mine in my backyard. I'm just proposing to allow the house to be used as a dwelling. So whether I allow somebody to stay there for five days or six months, I think shouldn't make any difference as long as it's not impacting my neighbors. And finally, I just, you know, point out again that short-term rentals, you know, do a service to tourism in Half Moon Bay and also contribute to the tax base of the city. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Seem, for your point of view.
Thank you.
Who's our next public commenter, Bridget?
Next we have Alisa. Or Alicia, I'm sorry if I mispronounced her name.
Welcome, Alicia.
Okay, you can speak.
Okay, great. So I'm a little bit late to this discussion. I'm not sure how. I heard from Mr. Butcher. I think I got an email. And so I'm a little late, late. It seems that the ordinance seems to have already gone through several iterations. But I just, you know, it's, I mean, I applaud all of the work because it's, it is, it is tricky, especially with all the other things going on from a policy perspective, including ADUs and lot splits and motels being purchased and trying to help the homeless, trying to help everybody have access to the beach. But with regard to, oh, and for, for just background, I have a home that I have rented as, for about six years as an STR, I think fairly successfully, without any incidents. It is not my primary dwelling. It was at one time, but it is not currently. So I think I really just want to quickly speak to this requirement regarding having to, having to have a primary residence. And to me, it's confusing because first of all, as someone mentioned, lots of land use issues here. And, you know, SFD stands for single-family dwelling. So what's happening here is really that, you know, you have a lot of homes that are single-family dwellings that are technically no longer single-family dwellings. Whereas a primary residence that is rented as an STR, it is still arguably a single-family dwelling because presumably there's just one family staying there. And because of that, then you don't have issues that are really quite complex in Half Moon Bay, exasperated like parking and water, two huge issues in Half Moon Bay. So if I'm not at my house and someone else is at the house, there is no parking issue and there is really no water overuse issue. And then you have, you know, if the reason, a primary
residence.
I'm sorry? How many seconds?
Thirty.
Thirty, okay. So as far as people being nearby, I mean, if you're not over on the coast, you can't get back in the summer within 20 minutes. So I don't really see, that you live there doesn't mean you are there when something might happen. I don't understand, I believe this might encourage code violations, whereas you wouldn't see those in a primary residence. I don't see the policy arguments. I see them with regard to ADUs, that people can't afford housing. I don't see some of these arguments with regard to STRs. I mean, I think there are reasons that, that primary dwelling doesn't compete with a motel because you're usually catering to families primarily. I usually rented my house to two adults and two children. They don't, you know, that's not in competition with the motel. It also seems to cater to people with a large house. I have a very small house. So it's catering to people that actually have a great big house where they can do this. Anyway, I will try to put my, the rest of my concerns down. I have, I have quite a few with the, it does seem that the ship sailed on the primary residence requirement. And I don't understand it at all from a logic and public policy perspective. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. We tonight probably have a large number of speakers. So we'd like everybody to, to confine their remarks to three minutes, please. And having said that, I'm sure that staff would continue to, to welcome more elaborate comments by email.
Yes. Yeah, anyone who wants to write afterwards on public comment is more than welcome to submit their final comments to us. Next we have Marina Shark, Stark, I'm sorry, Marina Stark.
Welcome.
Oh, I don't know. I don't, I'm there she is.
Should be able to unmute. No, you need to unmute. Yeah, it's okay.
Hi, hello. My name is Maryanna Stark. And I'm a new resident of Half Moon Bay. Very excited. My husband and I just closed on our home January 21st. So I'm playing catch-up here. We bought a mixed-use property in the CD district, 727 Main Street. We have a mini mall down the block. We have the Portuguese club on the other side of us. We have a hair salon. We have a bank and we have a brewery and a permanent taco truck and an Indian restaurant. And it's a fabulous, and then two residences and three residences. It's a great block. It's very exciting. And we bought it, assuming that in this mixed-use environment, we would have a lot of flexibility with what we could do with the building. And it's residential on top, office space on the bottom. The idea is to open a gallery, an art gallery on the bottom, and then the other half of the office space will be, I would like to convert it to a residence and basically a short-term rental. And now I'm learning this might not be feasible and I'm getting a little nervous. I'm the one, I wrote to Jill about parking as well for our funky little building, which is a, just a silly little stick, you know, residence with a, with a blacktop backyard and how adding units or creating retail spaces, it's just, there's no way to create parking in this backyard. It's just, it's just not feasibly possible. But being on Main Street, I mean, people are walking. Like we see, we see people walking all the time up and down, looking to buy things and spend money. They're eating ice cream. They're going to the brewery and they're having a great time. So I'm hoping that there might be flexibility for our building down the road. And so I won't eat up time talking about my building in particular. But I do just want to mention that it seems to me that my observation, late to the party here, is that these, the restrictions on the number of nights that someone can rent out their place or that it has to be an owner occupied are at a direct, are in a direct conflict with the desire for more tourism in the town and more people coming to Half Moon Bay to spend money. And I know there's also a transit plan that hopefully could alleviate this need for extra parking. I mean, in this day and age, like people don't want to drive anymore. They want to get out of their cars. They want someone else to drive them. They want to take a bus. They want to get here and then they want to ride bikes. So all this need for parking and cars, I totally understand that you don't want people like taking up all the residential parking. But I feel like it's a little anachronistic to have all this emphasis on parking when people don't actually want to drive at all anymore. So I would just suggest that maybe there's a different way to look at these parking requirements.
Twenty seconds.
And and that for the ADUs, you know, I don't think, having been a landlord in many different types of environments, including short-term rentals, I don't think that someone is going to turn their building or ADU or home into a long-term rental if they can't do a short-term rental. It's a completely different business proposition. It's a different temperament. It's a different way of relating to the customer. So I don't think it's a one-to-one trade-off, housing versus tourism rentals. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you for your, your comments.
Next we have Timothy Pond.
Welcome to Tim.
To be able to unmute there.
Hi, I'm Tim. And I'd like to thank the staff for the work they've done on this and the staff in general in Half Moon Bay's really good. And I just have to thank the planning staff for all the hard work they do. It's amazing how fast you guys get stuff done. I have a house on a corner with 150 feet of frontage. I pay $12,000 something in taxes every year. There is never a parking problem at my house. I've had a short-term rental for four years. If I was to use my two-car garage around the corner, I actually have a three-car garage. I could bring you guys out and show you that. In fact, I'm planning on converting part of it to an ADU and keeping two-car garage. I could show you that and say they're going to use that, but they're going to park on the street where they have parked for about 1,000 stays at my house. I've had probably 1,000 people stay. And I've not had one complaint about parking on my street at all. So I would like to ask if there's some kind of avenue for parking exception. And, you know, parking has been used as a club against development by cities in many ways for many years. In San Francisco now, you have to actually pay extra to have parking spots because it encourages cars within the city. And I don't think that's the case here. But I do have a lot of people coming with Uber and other means to my Airbnb from the airport. I actually volunteer to go pick people up, especially from overseas, if they're planning to just stay overnight here and then go somewhere else. But, you know, in a lot of cases, I don't have a person with a car. And if I do, like I said, I have 150 feet of frontage on my lot. I did have to get rid of my fire truck recently, which took up 25 feet. But, you know, I just wish that there was some path forward for that. And, you know, honestly, a lot of people are going to park in the street anyway when they come to these places. Like somebody can show you their two-car garage and their two-car parking in front of that garage. But realistically, people are going to park in the street. And, you know, I wouldn't, and since I've had, you know, a very long history here with all kinds of people coming to visit, no complaints, neighbors that actually have used my unit to have their family members come and stay that have smaller homes that want, you know, people in the neighborhood.
Thirty seconds.
A very friendly atmosphere. And I just, I would hope there'd be some path forward. I'm thinking now of changing my ADU design, which I was about ready to submit, to keep this three-car garage, which I never use, honestly. And with that, I would then, you know, be able to show you that, but still there would be parking in the street. I want to convert part of it to an ADU as it is. So anyway, thank you very much for your work on this.
Thank you, Tim.
Thank you. Have a nice night.
I'm sorry to hear about the fire truck.
Yeah, the sheriff was on me.
We'll miss it.
All right. Next we have Matthew DeTrom.
Welcome, Matt.
All right. Hello. Can you guys see me? Thank you for the call. Tim, I too, I'm sorry about your fire truck. So joking aside, very thoughtful ordinance. It's taken a lot of time for you guys to go in this. That graph in terms of ADUs and primary residents and non主 residence, very helpful. I think as a resident, as somebody whose mom lives here and whose sister lives here and who chosen for this, or need to park neighborhood to be our resident, our residential community, I think keeping the residential nature of our community is very important. But I also agree with Mr. Seem and Ms. Stark about people's abilities to use their houses in the way that they see, they deem appropriate. I wonder if there's a way to, you know, again, you know, I understand the reason for this ordinance. to, you know, again, you know, I understand the reason for this ordinance. I think that, that given that, that both Ms. Stark and Mr. Seen and Ms. Pond have a history of responsible ownership, I'm wondering if there's a way to allow responsible owners to continue to operate, that there's some sort of thoughtful mechanism that, that allows us to to keep this neighborhood and neighborhood, but also to, to not, not penalize, you know, some of our responsible community members. I would also argue that in the pandemic time, 100% of us are working from home right now. You know, that's a commercial use. I work for American Express in my house. I have done so here on the coast for 10 years. That's, you know, that's no more or less a commercial use than having somebody come out and stay in my house. And I think that there's been other comments that are exactly right, you know, whether it's me having my cousins over or, you know, a family with another family, you know, in, in a house. It's the same amount of people. I would argue that there's many houses on the coast that are bursting at the seams. You know, with, with more than one family per house and so on. But, but I just think that overall, it's a very thoughtful ordinance. And I also concur with Tim that the parking requirement seems a little bit of window dressing because it's, you know, you know, I have a two car garage and plenty of parking off street, but my guests also park on the street. They don't park in the garage. They don't park in the driveway. They park on the street. So it feels like that's window dressing. I understand if there might, you know, I'm not sure there's a way around it based upon, you know, what's kind of normal in the planning commission. So that's all I have. Thank you very much again for your thoughtful ordinance here. It's, you've done a great job. I appreciate it.
And thank you for your thoughtful comments, Matt.
Hey. Looks like we have one more. Ray Olson.
Welcome, Mr. Olson.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yeah.
Sorry about that. Okay. So first, kudos to Jiplin Joe. Thank you so much for pushing this forward. You know, I have a very self interest in this matter. So thank you. I know the pandemic made for a pause in this ordinance. So thank you very much. I want to say thank you for the parking reg, requirements. It's awesome. And I think that's very desperately needed. So thanks a lot. I don't know about the mixed use. So the, the lady talking about having the place on Main Street, I, I feel for you, but I just want to say, when 95% of the homeowners in Half Moon Bay signed off on their loan and their contingencies to buy their house, they never considered having a motel next to them. And so I have a motel right next door to me and they have beds for 12 people. And the primary residence is supposed to be sleeping in the garage, but he doesn't. And so I had to live through hell the first six months last year during the pandemic. When I had to install cameras on my phone, on my side of my home, because I feared for the safety of my three kids because I had strangers living at the house at least four nights a week. So I think as a default, we should not allow a motel in a residence area. So I know we can't do that, but that's, I think that's logically what should happen. So barring that, I think I read the ordinance many times, and I think the following needs to be applied. First off, anything we do should be put up for vote for the Half Moon Bay residents because it's so important for people that have a million dollar debt on their home to know whether they're going to lose money on their home or gain money on their home based on having a motel next to them. Second, I think that I, I want to ask, why is there not a limit per year? That makes no sense. We should start small and then if it works well, then we should increase. But we should not start where it's completely open ended. Second, okay, second, the fact is that if they're renting a home and, but it's their primary residence, they should not be able to rent their entire home. If they're living there, they should be able to rent two rooms, whatever they need for supplemental income. Why rent the entire home? Because they can skirt all the other requirements by leaving and coming, but by making sure the home is limited to a certain number of heads per night, i.e. if it's two beds, four people per night, that would make more sense. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Olson.
I have no more comment, commenters that are raising their hand.
Yes, if any, if, if any of our other members of the public who are attending want to comment on as part of this study session, this is the time to do it. I see a new hand.
Yeah, I do. And oh, there it is. I have B. Wilson.
Welcome.
Thank you. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Hi, I have been, this is Laura Brian's wife. We have been living across the street for what was a four bedroom family house. Felt very safe. The family was always coming and going. They listed that house as an 18 bed facility. And they had people, I'm sorry, 14. They had people coming and going every single Thursday, new people coming and going ridiculous numbers. So there definitely has to be a discussion about what is realistic for, you know, and I think it does make a lot of sense to have maybe some varying parking requirements based on where you are downtown versus where we are. There is room on the streets, but it's just really critical to feel safe. To Ray's point where we live, we came to a residential area. There is not an 18 or 14 room hotel across the street from us. It's a, it's a four bedroom house. So there has to be limits on the population that's allowed to use these. I also think that it's essential that people are in the property or within 20 minutes. Those are really important rules to make sure that, you know, things happen in that house and we know the owner is an hour away. There's, you know, trash blowing when they leave. There's things that a nearby person would be looking after that long distance landlords are not able to keep up with. So I am so firmly for property rights. You should be able to do what you need to do with your home, but there needs to be a way to live in this community with with the expectation set of a certain number of people that makes sense that you feel safe in the community. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Do any other members of the public want to comment?
They did. I saw them nod. There's something between these two things.
Okay, sorry about that.
Someone needs to turn off their mic. There's a reverb.
It was the attendee. I was just muting them and doing that. So I apologize. Okay, so going once. I don't see anyone else at the moment.
Yeah, we, so we, we welcome public comment at this point. See, I have a lot of attendees and not so many speakers, but you're, you're welcome to, to view. And I'm going to close the public comments if there are no further ones.
The only, the only comment I would, I'd like to just go ahead and speak on if you, if I can have a moment. I just want to clarify just two things that I heard a couple of times and, and something I also received in an email earlier. We kept hearing about caps on how many nights per year. I'm not sure where that came from because whenever we all discussed at our last meeting about primary residency, we actually took away the idea of capping how many nights, you know, unhosted, hosted, hosted, of course, is unlimited, but unhosted would essentially be capped by primary residency. So we could still allow up to half of the year, like 180 days. So there isn't actually a cap that we've had proposed at this time. That was based on the direction from where we were back in January of 2020. The other thing I want to mention, just to, to raise, and I'm sorry, B. Wilson, I didn't catch your name. I apologize. About a number of occupancy, if you look in our ordinance, we did actually have drafted for a maximum amount of persons, which could potentially help out for what you guys are dealing with in your neighborhood of two, two adults per bed, per bedroom, max eight, and then excluding children 12 and under. So that could hopefully remedy some of that hotel feeling that you're getting in your neighborhood.
Thank you, Joe. Those are relevant comments. Commissioner Benjamin, do you seek the floor?
I do. Thank you. This is a, this is a chance to sort of react to the public comments, which were helpful and interesting as usual. And try to air some, some new thoughts that weren't clarifying questions based on the draft of the, of the ordinance and some of the comments that our colleagues have shared. And that's a lot.
Excuse me. I, I, I didn't realize you were wanting to leap into discussion. I just wanted to check with staff one more time and see if there are any, any points staff would like to make similar to Joe's response.
Our yield.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chair and Commissioners. We've, we've been communicating. We wanted to make sure to be very clear about the items that Joe just addressed because we keep hearing a different understandings of that. So that said, if there's anything after this meeting tomorrow, the rest of the week, any of the attendees that would like to clarify, anything about occupancy, et cetera, so they are encouraged to contact Joe. We noticed that one of your speakers has raised their hand again. I think you're at the end of your public comment period. So we just want to make sure that you're aware of that. I don't know if he used all his time or what happened, but that's just a note. And then we're just standing by to support your discussion. There wasn't a lot more. Last time we had a lot more to respond to, but not so much tonight.
Thank you, Jill. I, I think I would, would lean towards asking people who want to make further comments to do it in email rather than opening it up to a second round of, of potentially could be a bunch of speakers want to make additional comments. Commissioner Benjamin, I'm sorry to have interrupted you that way.
Not at all.
Sorry. Can I interrupt just briefly? We should close the public comment, the public comment period at this time then.
I think I did, but just to be sure, public comment is closed.
I heard the happy sound. Okay, so let me just touch one, one question that I heard weaving through several of the comments we received from the public, which was the notion that by imposing some limitations on people's ability to do unbridled short term rentals, we are interfering egregiously with their right to use their property as they see fit. I, I did hear the concern. I respectfully disagree. And I want to try to explain why the primary residency requirement illustrates that. It is not that, although Mr. Olson and Ms. Wilson, Laura, I believe she identified herself as certainly brought a war story to their public testimony. We have no reason to doubt it. There are many experiences with these short term rentals that are effective, that have minimal impact on their neighbors. And by all indications, it's really working well in those situations. Our job as a planning commission is to look out at the horizon and ask ourselves if, if one is good, is, is two better, is 10 better, is 100 better? And what is the long term impact of a change from primarily residential neighborhoods to neighborhoods that have a significant density of homes that are rented on a short term basis? The first few homes don't have the same impact as the 30th or 40th home in a neighborhood. And if we look at the city as a whole and say, well, that's a very small fraction of the entire city, therefore it shouldn't be a concern. I think we will have done some neighborhoods a disservice because some neighborhoods are more likely to be a draw for short term rentals than other neighborhoods. So the density of neighborhood versus the impacts that they would have on the experience of living in a neighborhood, as it was presented by some of the speakers tonight, I think follows something of a logistics curve that the first few aren't, aren't really that big a deal. And then at some point it begins to ramp up. And you know, after you've got, I'm going to make up a percentage, you know, 30% or 20% or 80%, whatever number you want. The next one probably doesn't make much of a difference either because it's not going to feel like a neighborhood at that point. It's going to feel like a condo village. And I, I think with respect to the folks who are doing it, who can't understand yet why we might want to have some restriction on this. To me, at least, that's the reason why, because we have to figure out what it means to live in a neighborhood. And of course, zoning and the restrictions associated with zoning are perfectly constitutional. They do not represent an infringement on people's property rights. That is well established law. With respect to the, the comments that folks had about parking, of course, we heard both sides. It is certainly true that some neighborhoods, there's a, a great deal of parking available. If we were to tailor the ordinance to provide some kind of exception for those people in our zoning, that begins to sort of head us in the direction of spot zoning, which makes me a little bit uncomfortable. And I realized that that term can be used more broadly. And I'm sure I'll get clarification from staff about at what point it might start to feel like that. I, I do have a, a number of other comments associated with the coastal acts provision to require separation or an effort to avoid the impacts of residential, sorry, of visitors serving on residences. But rather than going into the minutia at this point, I also want to get off the floor and give my colleagues a chance to weigh in. So thank you for letting me have a first one.
Thank you, Commissioner Benjamin. Always cogent. Other commissioners care to express their opinions? Commissioner Gorn?
I wasn't sure if you were going to go. I had a couple of, a couple of questions. A small one for Joe is I, I do see that the this primary residency, that there's some ways to skirt that primary, primary residency. And I know legally they can't do it, but it doesn't really, in terms of practically, I wanted to know what can be done when people want, you know, people put the residence in their name only. So they put it in their wife's name or their sister's name or their brother, there's brother in laws, uncle's name. And, and so that they have multiple residences that become Airbnbs, that become SGRs. So it's a quick question, but I have one other thing that I think is important. Do you want to answer or do you want to, should we just move on?
Yeah, I can chime in. I also think that maybe Sarah can kind of give a little bit of clarification on this as well, but I, I would imagine that with our, with our registration process, that the applicant would have to provide some sort of tax document. that the applicant would have to provide some sort of tax documentation that would be consistent to the, the applicant, as well as the name on the, the tax, uh, the property tax, you know, proof of property tax for that address to that person, to try to avoid what you're talking about. But maybe Sarah can provide a little bit more on how we could actually, you know, realistically monitor this and make sure that this isn't happening.
I guess, I guess I just know it's done, so.
Yeah.
So.
I've seen, and had to address it in other jurisdictions. One of the ways that we're hoping to help address it is by requiring that every adult that lives on a property has to be listed as an operator. And so if, you know, you have a husband and wife, you can't have it be that they actually own two houses. One of them contains, you know, house A is their primary residence, one has house B is their primary residence, but really they're just living in house A. They would have to be both listed as their primary residence, and then you can't operate more than one unit in the city. So that's one particular thing that we're trying to look at to, um, to address this issue. But it's a complicated one, and certainly we do know.
That you're aware of it. I just want to make sure you're aware of it, and it's like something to watch for. So, um, you know, when I thought about this whole thing, it seems like there's two big things about Airbnbs, about STRs that people don't like, that are, people are fearful about. And one of them is this idea that businesses are run from out of town, that it's run as an Airbnb business. Um, and hopefully that residency, primary residency requirement will slow that down a little bit, even if it doesn't stop it. I know that personally, you know, my, my son cannot find a place to rent in Happan Bay, and the, the housing stock is so low. And obviously, you know, Airbnbs, STRs are going to deplete that housing stock a little. And so I'm hoping that the primary residence takes care of that to some degree. So the other thing that I think people are really scared about is that STRs will proliferate, that they will be everywhere, and that they will change the character of the neighborhood. So it's like one thing to have an STR down the street from you, like, okay, there's an STR. But when you start getting six of them, or eight of them, or ten of them in your neighborhood, it changes your neighborhood. And I think that that's a really big concern that we haven't really talked about. We kind of touched on it briefly last time. But I also think our, you know, our primary, the, the city of Happan Bay makes money on, on TOT. And, and they are a threat to the hotel business, just like Uber and Lyft is a threat to taxis. They're going to put them out of business. In the same way, if you allow unlimited STRs, they are going to eventually edge out hotels. They're going to impinge on the hotel business, and in that same way. So, so it's like those two things, those three things, I guess, together, which is depleting the housing stock, the impinging on TOT, because they don't contribute as much as hotels. And then this big one, which is changing the character of your neighborhood, so that your neighborhood changes. And so I would say that you need to have some kind of cap on how many there are. And I know this is, you know, that's a scary thing, and it's not really where I was, um, you know, at the last meeting. I do think it's important to make sure that people can register and to encourage them to register and get on the rolls. That's really important to me. But, you know, what you said to me last time is that there's about a hundred, maybe fewer than a hundred, and pre-COVID, before COVID started, it was about a hundred. And I think you just need to put a cap, even if it's temporary, even if it's a cap you change later on, to, to say, okay, well, we need to limit it to a hundred, or a hundred and fifty, or whatever it is. Because if you don't, you could be looking at four hundred, five hundred, six hundred. You know, like, how many do you want in your neighborhood, in your community? And that's a big question for me. So I would say, um, that's something that, I know Jill's going to hate me for this, but I think you gotta establish some kind of cap, and it does open up some other legal issues that you talked about before. But I think it's important, so. All yours.
Thanks, Commissioner Gorn. Vice Chair Polgar.
Oh, wow. So, well, I, I would, I really appreciated Commissioner Benjamin and Commissioner Gorn's comments about the kind of thinking longer term, um, and that being a key reason for going through this process and developing this ordinance. And I, uh, you know, I definitely, I, I hear the, the thoughts about how things are going. There are these really good actors and, and good, um, short-term rentals happening. And I also hear that, you know, the, the other end of the spectrum in terms of some of the scary stories. And so, uh, but I, I really, really appreciated, uh, you know, the, the, the kind of framing, the longer thinking that we need to have. I need to process a little bit more, actually. I was interested, uh, Commissioner Gorn, in the concept of, of, uh, kind of returning to think about the, a cap. So I'm, I'm not sure I'm ready to comment on that. I will say that, um, you know, I, I think that, you know, there's a couple of issues that you, the staff and that also, um, that some of the public commentators brought up, that I just want to touch upon. One is related to parking. I get that the reality is that people park on the street, even if they're supposed to park in the spots. But I think that having a requirement that relates to providing parking onsite at least gives some, you know, some way that we can try to keep, you know, if there is, especially if there are incidences where, uh, the property is being overwhelmed with cars, and, you know, there's, gives us some teeth to be able to say, no, that's not okay, um, and some, some way to intervene. Right now, I'm not sure there's a way to intervene necessarily. And so that's important. And, and I, I do see the value of having a, potentially a parking exception as part of this. I would say that it'd be very helpful if there were some pretty clear guidelines about when it go, because it will come to the planning commission, and my understanding is that it's not a ministerial decision. So in that case, I'd, I'd like to see some pretty clear, um, guidelines for, for how it makes its way to the, to the planning commission, so that it's not necessarily just by default, they ask and they get to have it, you know, come, that they're, that if they're just asking because they just want it, as opposed to there being some reason that triggers the, the need. Like you said, historic resource, I, I, that was a really good example. So that, that makes sense to me. Or a house that was, you know, built, uh, you know, long before there were any parking requirements or garage requirements and stuff, or, you know, I don't want, expect them to necessarily redo their house, for instance. That, that doesn't make sense. So that kind of thing, I, I see the value. So that would be my feedback on that. I definitely, um, I, I, one thing that I didn't, this is very nitpicky, but it is important to me that, I think, to revisit what's in the, um, section six, or four, excuse me, of the existing ordinance. Because right now, the way it's written, it, we don't actually, for the registration term for the renewal, we're not actually requiring them to come back with their, their primary residency showing that they may. And so I, I think that's an important, we, we need to be really, because we keep referring to how they will have to be primary resident. And if that's what we're kind of hanging our hat on, then I think we need to make sure that the registration requirements are really clearly have that in there. Otherwise, I don't see where they're actually going to, once they've established it once, they might be able to say, sorry. I'm also, um, a little, uh, there was one other thing. I guess, um, I, I see that, uh, the, the idea of a, a cap is really, is interesting to me. I think that one of the challenges is that, um, it, it's, it isn't, there's kind of a fairness aspect that I don't like about the cap. I also don't know necessarily that it solves the problem. Because, um, if thirty percent of that hundred are within a four-block radius in one neighborhood, well, that neighborhood's, you know, not a neighborhood, and not, you know, this doesn't feel like a residential neighborhood anymore. Um, and if the, you know, sixty are spread out, the, or seventy, sorry, I can't do math apparently, after nine o'clock. So I guess I, I'm not seeing that that gets us to solving this issue, which I think is real. I, I appreciated Commissioner Gorn's, I, you know, this idea of like the business out of town. I think that the primary residency is the best option for, I mean, it's not perfect, but it is in terms of achieving kind of what we're, or trying to address that issue of this kind of a business run from just out of town with no, um, responsibility or consequences for not following rules, et cetera, or not behaving as a good neighbor. That's, you know, I like, I think the primary residency is a good way. I also, um, agree that we can't have so many, um, short-term rentals in a neighborhood such that it no longer is truly a neighborhood of, you know, residential neighborhood. And I do think, I am worried that, like, we're, we have hotels on the coast side that are here for tourism, and, uh, they are meant for tourists, so I don't want to see that. Um, I, I'm very worried about that. I just don't know that the cap, unless it were carefully somehow structured such that it took into account how many res, how many short-term rentals there are in different places. You know, I don't know how that would work. I'm a little, it's, it's, there's a fairness and that kind of aspect of how it actually would work. Um, and then I would just like, once again, to point out that, um, this, this concept of like allowing folks to use their house as, you know, that, that this is a, you know, placing unreasonable restrictions, uh, by limiting short-term rentals in some way, shape, or form. That, it, it, first of all, it's, it is commercial use, and I understand, you know, we're all, you know, many of us are working from home, but we're also living in our homes, you know? So, um, you know, so we are, you know, so there's, there, it's, we're still primary residents. And then, um, the other thing is that, uh, again, I think there was a comment from the last, uh, short study session where a, a very pithy comment about how just because you can't use it as a short-term rental doesn't mean that you're taking away this economic benefit that you can have from a short, a long-term rental, which we desperately need on the coast side. So, um, I'd just like to point that out again, that this economic kind of benefit, there's still this capacity to have an economic benefit for sure through rental. So those are my, my thoughts at this point.
Thank you, Vice Chair Polgar. Very, very, very well expressed, as always. You know, I, um, I was struck, uh, tonight, we heard from at least a couple of, of short-term rental operators who, as far as I know, have been excellent operators, uh, people who, uh, who have not had complaints from neighbors who are doing it the right way. And, and I'm sure that it is painful for those folks to, to, you know, see, see the process that we're engaged in and the, and the requirement for primary residence and such that is, is coming along. But I, I, I strongly agree with the articulate way that Commissioner Benjamin put it. You know, we're trying to design a framework for Happan's base, Happan-based future that is going to be fair for all neighborhoods and all, all residents, and to put the reasonable and required constraints on these commercial operations in, in, uh, in our neighborhood. So I, I, I can't think of a better approach to that than what the staff has brainstormed with the primary residency requirement. I think that will, will do an awful lot of good. I, um, uh, I, I understand Commissioner Gorn's concerns about what's happening in the future. You know, Happan Bay was sort of, uh, discovered and taken to a new level of tourism and visitation last year, when nobody could fly to Hawaii or Europe on vacation. So they all came over to Surfers Beach for the weekend, and, and that's going to continue. I don't, I don't think it's going to lapse. And so there may well be pressure, but I, I wouldn't favor a cap on the number of short-term rentals in the city at this point in time. You know, could something happen where in five years, we might, we might feel differently? I guess, but I, I think, uh, two weeks ago, we had a pretty clear discussion of, um, why a cap isn't the best way to go. I think everything else in the ordinance is thoughtfully created to make sure that the short-term rentals we do have are, are run the right way and, and are run by people who are actively engaged in the neighborhood. Who's to say that the, the, the cap would be placed at a, a point where all the best operators would be in and all the worst ones would be out? So I, I'm, I'm not, I'm, I'd rather not go in the cap direction. Jill asked for some feedback on this issue, uh, commercial downtown. I do, I do see the point that, you know, that, that really feels more like a retail area rather than a residential neighborhood, for the most part. So I, I would be, um, we haven't had much time to think about it, but my first reaction is I, I could see the logic to being, um, a little more flexible regarding primary residency requirements in that particular zoning. And my, my last comment at this point, I would, two weeks ago, I was kind of in favor of lengthening that, that period of time from one year to two years for people to establish primary residency. But understanding that that would, that clock would start ticking at the point of coastal commission certification, I, I think that's fine. I think that will be plenty of time. Commissioner Benjamin, you have your hand up.
I do, uh, but let me just be sure I understood your very last comment. You were saying that you think one year is enough time?
Yes, I do. I think one year from, from coastal commission certification is going to be one year and, and a bit from the ordinance being passed.
I just didn't get all of it on the mic, and I wanted to be sure I grasped it, so.
Sorry. Well, thank you.
And by the way, I agree with you. So, uh, lots of good comments. I, I appreciate, um, the perspective that, uh, David's bringing. He's a quick study. And I would just say, uh, with respect to caps, uh, I share some of the angst that, uh, you feel about that. I don't pretend to be a legal, uh, you know, an attorney. I will say that in the absence of caps, it's hard to know what will work. With respect to, uh, Vice Chair Polgar's reservation that a cap at the city level doesn't address a high density in one area with a relatively acceptable density in another, I think she put her finger on the solution, which would be, if we, if it were possible to have caps, it would be to place the caps on a neighborhood-by-neighborhood basis to avoid that, that, you know, make it a local cap rather than a municipal level cap. There was another, uh, another discussion of an angle on this that came up briefly in, um, the staff presentation, if I recall correctly. And that was, uh, or maybe that's something that staff has to brainstorm. I'm not sure if it came up. But, um, if there were, uh, some other creative angles for addressing this, I, I certainly am open to hearing them. What I would say is, once you've opened the floodgates, it's very hard to close them. And for a while, it might not be urgent, you know, if we can resolve the bad actors with the other aspects of the regulations that are, uh, being, being brought forward here. But at, at the very least, I would hope that we could include some kind of, uh, you know, a futurist doesn't have to know what the future's going to be. They have to know what the signpost looks like that says, hey, we're heading in this direction, and we need to fix this problem, uh, or something that's about to become a problem. And I don't know if it's going to be, um, another way to express the density of STRs by neighborhoods as a kind of a, a, a road sign that says, wow, uh, Arleto Park has, you know, five percent of its residences are now, uh, applying for STRs, and, uh, three percent have, have converted, uh, in the last year. So there's something happening here. So there's something happening here, and we need to find a way to get on top of it. So I, I don't pretend to know the answer if caps don't work for some, if they're infeasible for some reason. But I would like to find a way to reserve our right to be able to react and to have a signpost that lets us see when a problem appears to be approaching us before it presents in a way that's been really deleterious to, to a neighborhood. So that was a lot. I should shut up and let others react. Thank you.
Thank you, Jimmy. Commissioner Gorn.
So I realize that the cap isn't a solution. And, you know, I'm not, I'm not real big on over-regulating. Don't really want to create more problems for staff. But I do think that if you don't settle in it, that's not planning. And I think that, you know, STRs are new, relatively new, just the way Uber and Lyft are new. And, and so they're evolving. And if you don't send a message that there's a limit, some kind of limit, then you're sending a message that there's no limit. So I feel like, you know, if you make, you know, we're all kind of figuring it out right now, and you're kind of feeling out how it's going to go. And I think that this regulation, this ordinance that you put together is wonderful. So I think it's set a really good, really good parameters for how things can work. I also think if it's not working, you can change it. But if you don't put any limit in there, that's not something you can change. You can't put a limit in afterwards. So what do you want in this tiny little city of Half Moon Bay? Do you want six hundred STRs? Because you might have them. We don't know. So that's really my point. I don't have like a, you know, I'm all gung-ho on it. I love it. It's so good. But I do feel like, you know, as a planning commission, you know, you got to plan. And that's, I think you have to have some element in there that is, that is a limit. That's what I think. I don't know what that would be.
Vice Chair Polgar.
Well, continuing on this thread, I, I still don't know how I feel about the caps. I do think, though, that it's worthwhile understanding if this has been implemented in a creative way in other communities with success. I, I think it's a really good point that you kind of, once the, the, you know, the floodgates are open, you kind of can't pull it back. So, but I, I, again, like a hard number is hard for me to envision. I, I think more in terms of kind of density, in turn, you know, density of, of STRs in certain areas or, and, and, and I, and again, I really want to, I think that maybe this is something that staff has already looked at, how other, other communities are, have implemented, if they've used this approach. And I'll wait till Jill says, Sarah, maybe you can inform us about that. And I'll get all nervous for a second that she's referring to me, which is how I, every time, this meeting, the last one, I get all like tense for a second, and I go, oh, gosh, it's not me. So, and, but I did want to just touch on one more thing before I kind of relinquish the floor. And that was, the other thing, this is something that Chair Ruddock touched upon, and I meant to, to, to provide feedback, because you asked specifically, staff did, about the requirement for not, not necessarily having a primary residency requirement for mixed-use zone, or, excuse me, not, it's the commercial downtown and the commercial general. And I, I think that makes sense. I, I get that. And it, it does, I, I like that, you know, exception of not having that primary residency for those areas, if, if they're already meant for, you know, that visitor use. So that made sense to me. So I just want to provide that feedback.
Great. Thank you. You know, on the, on the subject of the cap, I, I think that if, if one of our citizen operators were here right now, he would point out to us that fewer than one percent of the houses on the coast side are engaged in short-term rentals. And, and it's true that, that could well become higher in the future. But the market dynamics being what it is, it would, it would be hard to predict what level of growth there would be there. I also would dislike the scenario where, you know, somebody on the next block goes to a lot of time and trouble to make a, a part of his primary residence into a, into a short-term rental so that he and his family can continue to, to be able to afford to live in Half Moon Bay. And then somebody on the, the block over from that wants to do it, but we, but City Hall tells him, well, I'm sorry that their permits are all taken up. You can't, you can't go that way. Commissioner Gorn.
Well, if it's really one percent, we've got less than a hundred now, then you can set a high cap. I mean, if it's not going to affect, you know, if it's really such a small number, and it's, you know, I guess it's really, what do you want to see in Half Moon Bay? What do you want? Want two hundred? More?
Commissioner Benjamin?
Yeah, I, you know, I worked for almost twenty years at HP, and so I wanted to take a step and manage by objective here. And that's old HP talk. And I think when I, when I look at the Coastal Act, which is the, sort of the framework that we have to work with, right? We have language, I seem to remember it somewhere. I haven't, I haven't dug it out of the Coastal Act. But I, you know, there's a section, I know, in 30253 where we talk about protecting certain special communities. And, you know, I don't think we, you know, maybe they're talking about, I don't know, indigenous, you know, First, First Nations or something. I don't know. But it does seem to me, or, or places that have a particular, that might be a particular draw for tourists. And if you're a city that's partially in the coastal zone and partially not, that might not be all of your city. In Half Moon Bay, maybe the draw on one side of Highway One would be different than the draw on another side of Highway One. Or one neighborhood might draw differently than another. But I wonder if, if staff thinks that there's a framework in the Coastal Act for recognizing the, the, the conflict between visitors and residences that's supposed to be managed in a way that reduces those conflicts and that we can identify neighborhoods that are getting hit hard as places where we should be able to enact those limits. Or, you know, to put it in a much harder brass-tack way, let me turn my good chair's question around and point it at him. Suppose that the neighborhood has twenty homes, and, you know, twelve of them are now STRs. Is there, you know, have we gone beyond the point of no return? And out of an interest of fairness, should we let all the dominoes fall? And if not, what is the, what's the, the point in the past before those twelve of the twenty were turned that we should have said, oh, stop the music?
Oh, a good point and a good question. As, as an old HP guy, I appreciated your old HP slogans, too. Does city staff have, want to weigh in at this point? Go ahead, Jill.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you, Chair Ruddock. And we'd like to share some more thoughts about caps and thinking about your next steps in this work. And Sarah's going to also make, make a few notes about spot zoning and exceptions, because that was something that came up in your conversation. First of all, the most important thing I have to say tonight is that I don't hate Commissioner Gorn for bringing up caps. We're glad that you did and that you're, you're vetting it and working through it, and it's fine. So I, we, we didn't want to squelch any of your creativity, your intent or thoughtfulness in looking, taking a really good, hard, long view. We do want to share a few thoughts about this and offer to get some more information. So first of all, we want to be clear that this ordinance is more likely to slow down the growth of short-term rentals than not having the ordinance because of the primary residence requirement. So we're, we actually believe that could have a really significant impact on how many we have over time. One thing that we owe you is, we'll try to, we will try to figure out how many we have of each type. It's difficult right now because the listings go up and down, and the number that are registered with the city kind of, it waivers. And then this year of COVID has really changed how they've operated in this last year. It really shouldn't have been operating for the most part. So we'll get the best data we can about primary residence. And you heard a few folks tonight say that, you know, I have one, and I'm, I'm not a primary residence, and they are concerned. We, we are aware of that. Many, many of them are. And the feedback that we have from operators who run hosted short-term rentals is that it's a, it's not something you want to do all the time. Really, you're putting yourself out there as a homeowner and bringing some, somebody into your house. So we'll, we'll get you more info about that. Now, we do, we do need to also talk about the logistics of getting the ordinance finalized and eventually certified. And the Coastal Commission has oversight of, of such a requirement as for a cap. And we're not fully sure right now that we have adequate evidence to support the cap. We can look at what they've required from other cities. That's, that's something that, that we're, we would be expected to do. I think our, Sarah Clark already talked about how, with regards to affordability, if the ordinance was seen as something that was reducing opportunities for more affordable coastal access, the Coastal Commission will require a significant analysis associated with that to prove it out. And this is the same kind of thing. So give us a chance to learn about what would be included in that, because I'm not, not really sure. We would like to, in any case, whether you pursue a cap or not, we think this should be monitored and mapped and can be reported back to the commission over time so that it doesn't, if, if you didn't have a cap, it wouldn't run away from you. And you would catch it for both totals as well as for concentrated pockets, which I think is what some of the, the biggest concern is. The addressing the conflicts between residential uses and coastal access was brought up, and whether or not that could be used to manage a cap in different neighborhoods, that, that likely has potential. That said, that's what the intent was with all the performance standards that are put in this ordinance, obviously, and, and the binder and the, the feedback that we've received last time about sensitive receptors. So you're, you're getting a, a lot of the things that you're talking about, we believe. I'm not, and I'm just not sure what we can do about a cap without some more information. So we'll, we'll do that. We'll go, we'll go dig in. And if Sarah has more on this one, she'll cover it. But I, I'm going to turn it over to her now to talk a little bit about parking exceptions.
I appreciate you.
Yeah, I think. The only other thing that I would add on the cap issue is that this has been an area where the commission has denied or recommended denial unless modifications are accepted for various jurisdictions. But I'm, we'll have to dig into the specifics around those caps that were proposed, what the ratios were, how exactly they proposed to be implemented. But I do just want to be clear that this is one area where we will go from having a, an ordinance that I think would pretty easily obtain Coastal Commission approval to something where we'll have to do a fair amount of additional work to make sure that we're falling within that. And, and that, I, I don't mean to, to, to say that we won't do that or anything like that. I just want to make, make it clear that this is a, an ordinance where, or a direction that the Coastal Commission will be very interested in, in reviewing carefully. And then I wanted to go, feels like way back to Commissioner Benjamin's earlier question about spot zoning and parking exceptions, and a concern that, you know, granting exceptions may be sort of impermissible spot zoning. Generally speaking, where you get into concerns about spot zoning is where you are applying differences in your zoning code and different standards to parcels that are similarly situated. So where you have, you know, two parcels that are sort of identical or, or look similar and where they're located, the size of the parcel, the potential for use, externality, all of that sort of thing. And, and for whatever reason, the city is applying two different standards. It often comes where you have like a, a big zoning overlay, and then you see like one tiny little donut hole or something like that, that it's hard to justify why they're getting different treatment. Exceptions, on the other hand, and in particular the parking exceptions, the way that the commission can make findings for parking exceptions and other exceptions is because the parcel is not similar to others that are around it. So the reason why a parcel might be allowed to get a parking exception is because it has a strange configuration, or there's historic uses on it, or other characteristics or factors that make that particular parcel and the required restrictions unique. And so that's why it doesn't cross into the realm of spot zoning. So hopefully that addresses the, the question that Commissioner Benjamin raised.
Yes, Commissioner Benjamin.
Commissioner Benjamin understands. Thank you very much. And I, yeah, I didn't think that the proposal was spot zoning. I thought some of the requests we got sounded like, just do it for me. And that felt like spot zoning to me. That was my concern. But I, I concur completely with your thinking. I defer to you as well as concur with you. With respect to the director's point that any, any STR regulation is better than no STR regulation, I under, I heard that. I understand it. And if we were going to get caught in a long knockdown dragout, I would hate to sacrifice a year chasing the questions of how caps might work. I, I was just reading through the Coastal Act in parallel with listening, and I, in addition to 30253, where it's talking about the need to protect certain neighborhoods with certain characteristics, there's also 30214A that talks about the appropriateness of limiting access depending on areas such as the fragility of natural resources and the proximity of the access area to adjacent residential uses. So I think that there are some, some opportunities here. I haven't reread the quick synopsis that we got with the first STR report, but I do remember the rejections in the table for the city of Santa Barbara were premised that it was going to eliminate existing STR access and that that was the crux of, at least in the table summary, that was the reason that they said, you can't do it. So that reinforces the importance of planning for a cap before you have more than you want. So that reinforces the importance of planning for a cap before you have more than you want to have your, you know, before you exceeded what you think is a reasonable number. I also appreciated Vice Chair Polgar pointing out though, staff had sought feedback on some of the commercial areas. I thought what staff proposed was perfectly reasonable. I also agreed that not doing it in CR and not doing it in CBS is perfectly reasonable. I was thinking about the watchman's quarters around Pillar Point and how they sort of became de facto housing. And it would be sad if our commercial visitors serving or our commercial residents worked that way. With respect to, it was one other thing that I wanted to get on the table. Oh, Commissioner Gorn's comment earlier about water. I wanted to just touch that briefly. I, I don't know if Jill's comments sort of framed it well, but you know, the idea is that we've kind of built our LCP over the last year or so around certain assumptions about how much water we might have, not what we have today, but what we project in the future, anticipating that we may need to do conservation measures and we may get, we may get less water from Bosque anyway. And so it's again, a case of not, you know, that, hey, there's a wall and I'm about to hit it. It's, you know, my foot seems to be on the accelerator and I know somewhere out there in the future, there's a wall and I want to link those things together. That's what the water conversation was about. At least that's, that was my understanding of it. So, yeah, I do, and you know, as far as Commissioner, Vice Chair Polgar's observations about being uncomfortable with hard numbers for caps, you know, I'm open to other approaches to how we're thinking about that. You know, it could be some kind of percentage or, you know, you know, it's not, I'm not looking for a hard number here, but I am looking for a fail safe. Because I think we are, you know, if anything, the COVID experience has taught us how vulnerable we are to impaction as a, as a, as a small community, providing an important resource that we are proud to provide by and large to our neighbors to the east. We want to be sure that our neighborhoods don't fall on their sword to continue doing that.
Well said. Vice Chair Polgar?
Thank you. I had a couple follow-up thoughts after staff's comments and my fellow commissioners. So I still am not necessarily, you know, fully on board really with the cap concept. And I'm a little, I'm hesitant based on what I'm hearing from staff to send staff down the path of really investigating this too thoroughly. And, and because I, like you were commenting, if, I don't want to see this delayed. I am really eager to see us have an ordinance in place. I do agree with Jill, your comments about that the primary, I do think the primary residency requirement will shift and slow the, the kind of new STRs and kind of, and change that. And so I, I really am in favor of mapping and tracking what's going on. I think that would be really helpful to have a geographic perspective on where the STRs are and where they're kind of getting, there's a lot of demand. And, you know, I, it's, it's, it's a little hard because, you know, I'm thinking of other things like if you're looking at Ocean Colony, which has an HOA and we've included in here this, you know, provision that, you know, somebody has to get the HOA approval beforehand. And so that may mean that the, that if we, we just need to be really careful because then I could see that the, the kind of the pressure gets pushed out onto other neighborhoods to accept, you know, they end up with more STRs. It's just, I'm very hesitant about the cap in part because I, I recall the, kind of the commission, the Coastal Commission is, it does not like, you know, to see that type of real hard line and I'm worried about that. I think that, but again, I'm very much in favor of tracking and, and bringing that back to discuss and revisit and look at so that we aren't surprised. I'm just nervous about the repercussions of going down, of including a cap in here in some way, shape or form that could kind of be a monkey wrench for the whole ordinance. It worries me and it's a lot of time spent. The only other thing I did want to bring up, and this is probably pretty minor, but something I realized is that because of COVID and the everything that happened over the past year, I'm assuming that a lot of folks who were, who, who may, might not have been able to continue using their short-term rental as a short-term rental. So they may no longer be considered existing if we were just going by straightforward, you know, it's a regular year, but it's not a regular year and I don't think it would be fair. So I just want to make sure that we have some provisions in there that recognize this was a really weird year and if you were following the rules, you wouldn't have been able to meet the requirements of being an existing STR. And so in a sense, I don't want to reward the people who didn't follow those rules and punish those who did. So that's, I just like a thought about this. So that's where I, I wish I felt more comfortable. I love the concept of not like letting the floodgates open and I hear the comment about how you can't take it back once it's existing, that there's that issue in Santa Barbara that the Coastal Commission objected to about removing existing STRs. But again, I'm really worried that that's going to send us down a much longer path in terms of getting this approved.
Through the chair.
I was going to call on Commissioner Gorn. Commissioner Gorn, please.
So I would just, I agree with the, the, this family residence requirement sort of helping keep down the, you know, the proliferation of STRs. I would say that Santa Barbara setting a cap or some other large city setting a cap is different than Happen Bay setting a cap. And I think that Happen Bay is so small that you can set a cap, you know, that's maybe like a fail safe. Like, okay, you think there's, there's a hundred and so you set a cap of 200 or 250 or some, some large number that you really don't think it's going to meet any time in the next five years. And then within that provision, you say that you're going to revisit this in five years so that you get a lay of the land and you kind of figure out what's going on. I just think, you know, you can, nowadays you can blink and everything changes and, you know, we're the planning commission. So I just don't want to blink and have, you know, 500 of them and go, oh my God, I didn't know that was going to happen. So that's all. I mean, I would say just look into it, see what, see what you see, especially for a small community like this. And that's all I would be interested in.
Thank you. Thank you. And I, I think you should not at all feel bad for bringing up the topic of caps tonight. I mean, this is a study session and the lively discussion we're having about it is, is, is right on. That's what the study session is for. Commissioner Benjamin?
Thank you. I did not mean to walk over you, Commissioner Gorn. Well said. And well said also Vice Chair Polgar. You know, I would just say, I think we, we may be in violent agreement because I don't like a lot of these things either. I will say that the Coastal Commission doesn't just have the option to accept what we propose or to reject it in whole. They have the authority to present a modified version and approve that as well, I believe. And so I'm hopeful that by laying bare the essence of the problem rather than deciding it's too risky for us to talk about it, we can say, you know, Coastal Commission, we've done our best thinking about this. This is what it feels like for us under the auspices of the existing certified local coastal program, whatever that is today. And, you know, here are the restrictions we see ourselves trying to operate with under the Coastal Act. This is what we think might be the right answer. If you think it's the wrong answer, we know you're going to tell us. I doubt that they would just reject it out of hand. I think they'd come back and bring us something different that might be a constructive dialogue rather than a no.
Does city staff have any comments on this at this point?
Through the chair, may I just respond or comment? So one, one thing though, that I, I just want to point out though, that reality is is that, that, I mean, the Coastal Commission is staffed and, you know, and people and they do their best to respond, I think, to our, you know, to what comes out of the city in terms of draft form. But I have, I will say our track record has been getting comments back and things pretty, they're often at the last minute and it's a very hard, it's hard to, it can be, once, they may respond rather abruptly and with a lot of kind of going to more of an extreme and perhaps maybe, I guess I just want to be really careful that we've thought through and I think you're not suggesting that we not be careful at all. I, I just would, before we kind of move forward with proposing something, I'd want to understand, first of all, did having, in places that were allowed to have caps, like that are not in the coastal zone, how did it work? I, you know, maybe, did it, did it actually help? I also, you know, just having a, if we, if there's a cap that we don't think we're ever going to reach, I guess you could make a case for including that in there, but it seems like a lot of work when you might just want to have something more along lines of saying, we need to track this and see if it's becoming a problem and be able to revisit it. Maybe a more pragmatic approach for what we need as opposed to kind of fighting the fight for a cap when we don't necessarily need it. And that, that's what I'm worried about is that we're sending ourselves on a path that may be rather challenging within, within an organization that is very busy and isn't necessarily designed to kind of provide that kind of good feedback timely. I mean, they just, they have a lot on their plate. And so I don't want to put us in a position of kind of being in combative necessarily when it might not be the, what we would best suit, address our needs. That's all. And I, I'm, I'm not going to like object to us moving down this path, but I just, I wanted to point that out that I've just seen that in the track record of our interactions.
Yeah, I resonate with what Vice Chair Polgar has said in her last couple of comments. It feels to me like we have made a huge amount of progress with this draft ordinance. We're maybe within a couple of months of it being passed by city council. The idea of caps feels to me like something in great conflict with the fundamental principles of the Coastal Act. In an ideal world, if time to market was not a concern, I'd say, yeah, great, study it some more and get Coastal Commission feedback, but I worry about that. I guess, I guess I would defer to city staff who have more experience with navigating the, the shoals of the Coastal Commission and, and what might make sense. Do we, do we feel like we can spend a little bit of time to get more intelligent about the concept of caps and if they ever would fly? Or do we, do we avoid injecting months-long delays into our ordinance process?
So I think what we have to answer tonight is we can't be sure. We do know that caps in other cities are, that have been approved through the Coastal Commission are quite high. And so that concept of a, maybe a really big fail safe cap is, is interesting from that perspective, just as a firm backstop. And I, what I think we need to do though, is give staff a chance to do a little more research and have a coordination meeting with Coastal Commission staff to update them where, about where we are with the strap ordinance. And it's something that they appreciate having. It's, it's the kind of relationship that we have with them all the way through their end use plan update, for example. And so this is, this is important and this particular focus area is one that we would really want to make sure that we're on firm footing with it. There's some other things in this ordinance that they might not be completely delighted about. So we, we really have a, it's, it's not just one thing or another, it's the way that it works together. And we want to be careful to keep it, keep it knit the way that it, it really is hopefully going to fit the community well. So we'd like a little more time and I don't have a good sense of when we can come back to you right now because I'm, we, we're starting to stack up your agendas, but we also don't want to put this off. I guess the thing I'm happy to hear tonight, staff, staff wants to get this done. We think we heard you want to get this done and that's very important to complete this work. So we will bear that in mind as we couple our schedule back together.
Terrific, terrific. I think, I think you understood us well. Okay, well, should we move on to the next item on our agenda?
Yeah, is that director's report?
I think so, but.
All right. I did not.
We need to give you the.
Today, the only thing I would like to mention is the training. So we put out a few opportunities for training over the last couple of weeks and would encourage you, if you can, to sign up for the Planning Commissioners Academy through the League of California Cities. It's obviously virtual this year. It's affordable. The training is kind of the first part and it's, there's four different days and if you can only do a few of the sessions on a couple of days, it's still worth the amount. It's, it really made it very, very user-friendly from that perspective. And then that investment in signing up will make available to you two mandatory trainings for ethics and sexual harassment training that are required every two years. And so we, we think that they would be done well by the league and would encourage you to do that. If you need that resent, let us know. Tara Hatcher is our assistant for our department and she's signing everybody up so you don't have to use your own credit card. And that's the one I really want to push. And then you saw Doug Garrison has been sending, sent you at least one email. When he sees things that look really good for the Commission for SEQA training, he is going to just go ahead and push those out to you. And he had a good one. So go back in your email and if you see one from Doug, that would be a one to take a peek at.
Well, thanks, Jill. And we certainly hope you feel better.
Thank you. I'm sorry, I'm a little fumbly tonight, but you were. Thank you and Joe and Sarah, thank you so much. They covered a lot of material tonight.
Yes, good, good, good effort all around with a complex subject matter. Do any commissioners have planning commission communications to share? No? Well, thanks, everybody, for, for a lively study session and a healthy back and forth. And Commissioner Benjamin?
Are you entertaining a motion to adjourn?
Sure.
So moved.
Do I hear a second?
A second.
I guess we need a roll call, please, Bridgette.
Commissioner Gorn?
Yes.
Commissioner Benjamin?
Yes.
Vice Chair Polgar?
Yes.
And Terrick?
Yes.
May adjourn.
Great work, Sarah. Thank you.
Well, everybody.